Good evening. Welcome to the Village Board meeting of the Village of Pleasantville. Today is Monday, November 22. We've had a video issue with the Zoom. So if you're on Zoom, you can hear all that's going on and you can see shared screens. You're not seeing our faces, which perhaps is a little gift for the Thanksgiving. We have a bunch of items on our agenda tonight, but some folks here, as well as folks in the community who are watching it, incidentally, you can also watch at PCTV76.org. First of our items is the introductory local law eight. So can I ask for a motion to open the public hearing on introductory law local eight of 2021 to opt out of allowing adult-use retail cannabis dispensaries and onsite consumption? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Welcome to the public hearing. So as those of you who are interested in this subject have heard, over the last couple of months, we've had a bunch of public meetings, as well as commentary back and forth through email that folks have sent us. And the result of all of that is that I think I can speak for the board in saying we're unanimous unanimously of the view that we should opt out of retail dispensaries and/or consumption establishments, in this case "and." A couple of points to be made. There are many conflicting views about this, but it's a rapidly changing world, and our decision to opt out is reversible in the future. If some future Village Board should see it otherwise, a failure to opt out now is not reversible. And so, you know, what the Board has presented is a local law to opt out. And I invite anyone who would like to comment on that subject. You're welcome to come to the podium. Let us know your name and address and what you think. But just to be clear, in order to save all of our time, the intention of the Board, and in fact, the resolution we have on later in the agenda, is to approve the opt-out. So comments are welcome from anybody on any subject. Okay. Fast.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah.
And joining us.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I say move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, the public hearing is closed. While we're at it, we'll have another public hearing, which I imagine imagined to be the faster of the two, but maybe not. Is there a motion to open the public hearing to consider accepting the irrevocable offer of dedication for Springfield Court?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Eric, you want to report the history of Springfield Court?
Sure.
That is the new roadway that's right at the edge of the village, next to Smith Street and Chapel.
So that's a new subdivision. All of the homes have been constructed and COs issued. As part of that process, it had been agreed that the village would take over ownership of the roadway. That's since been a private roadway. So we're at the point now where we're moving that forward. First step is to accept this offer. And then our village code mandates that we then have to have another public hearing to accept the deed. So this is the first step in the process.
And to be clear, it has been the intention of the village all the way along to accept this dedication, right?
That's correct.
Comments of any sort?
Nope.
Comments of any kind from the public?
Is there any public comment?
Right. There being none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Public hearing on that matter is closed. So we got some folks here who are particularly interested in our resolution number 299, which is the realization of that local law we referred to a moment ago in the brief public hearing. So can I suggest that we jump out of order for our normal activity here and first act on resolution number 299 first? Free these people for the rest of their nights. Invite them to stay here for the scintillating material we have to continue. But Paul, how about you?
Sure. Whereas the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville desires to opt out of allowing adult-use retail cannabis dispensaries and adult-use onsite cannabis consumption establishments within the Village of Pleasantville, and whereas proposed local law was introduced on October 25, 2021, to opt out of allowing adult-use retail cannabis dispensaries and adult-use onsite cannabis consumption establishments to locate within the Village of Pleasantville as authorized on the New York State Cannabis Law Section 131. And whereas the Board of Trustees held a duly notice public hearing on the proposed local law on November 22, 2021, at which time all those interested had the opportunity to be heard, and the public hearing was closed on November 22, 2021. And whereas the proposed local law is a type-two action pursuant to the State Environment Quality Review Act, CGR, 6, New York, CRR, Part 617.5, C26, and 33, as routine or continuing agency administration and management and the adoption of policies in connection therewith, such that no further environment review is required, and whereas the Board of Trustees is fully familiar with the proposed local law. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby adopts the proposed local law to opt out of allowing adult-use retail cannabis dispensaries and adult-use onsite cannabis consumption establishments to locate within the Village of Pleasantville as authorized on the New York State Cannabis Law Section 131. Be it further resolved that this local law is subject to a referendum on petition in accordance with the New York State Cannabis Law in Section 131, and the procedures outlined in Article 9 of Village Law, and thus may not be filed with the Secretary of State until the applicable time period has elapsed to file a petition or a reference has been conducted approving this local law. Be it further resolved that the village clerk is hereby authorized to publish and post a notice within ten days from the date of this resolution, which shall set forth the date of the adoption of the act or resolution, and contain an abstract of such an act or a resolution concisely stating the purpose and effect thereof, and indicating that such an act or resolution is subject to a permissive referendum. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby adopts introductory law local eight of 2021 to opt out of allowing adult-use retail cannabis dispensaries and adult-use onsite cannabis consumption establishments to locate within the Village of Pleasantville as authorized under New York State Cannabis Law Section 131, which is to become local law nine of 2021 upon its passage. The description of local law number nine is attached to the minutes of this resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments, questions? All right, let's have a roll call vote, since that's been a matter of significant concern. Paul?
I, oh, yes.
Nicole?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
High vote. Aye. Resolution passes unanimously. We have opted out. As reported, there is a section of the law that would allow... You guys should come more often. We don't...
You can keep clapping for the other resolutions.
Yeah. There is a section of the law, as reported in what Paul read, that allows this to be challenged and pushed to referendum. That seems highly unlikely in this circumstance, but it remains a legal possibility. At one point in time, I shared with you that we had received the advice of the New York Conference of Mayors not to act on this until the end of the year, not because of an ad to evasive, but because there were some scheduling issues that made that make sense. Conditions have changed that render that issue mostly moot. And add to that, it seems pretty unlikely in the community that 20% of the electors, that is, the registered voters, would vote to force this to petition. So there's my report. We've opted out. I invite you all to stay here for the rest of our exciting stuff, but if you want to leave, feel free.
Could we congratulate the football coaches that I see in the room for another victory while they're here?
Yeah, well done.
Well done. Your nine o'clock prediction, I thought, was impossible, but...
Yeah. Maybe.
He might make it.
A couple of announcements to make. One is a COVID update. As has been true statewide, we've seen a bit of a spike. Pleasantville had zero, that is, residents of the Village of Pleasantville had zero positives from November 1 to 8, and from November 9 to 21, we've had 30 positives and now have roughly 30 active cases. So I just call that out to make clear to folks that it's still around, and reasonable steps will help all of us. Vaccinations, as you know, are now available for kids 5 to 11. There was a pop-up vaccine site aimed primarily at kids run by Austin Volunteer Ambulance Corps at Phelps Hospital on Saturday at the farm market, very well attended. Much appreciate that support. Further, the CDC has now allowed booster shots for adults, Pfizer, Moderna, and Johnson &amp; Johnson, for anyone 18 and older and more than six months out. So it's obviously concerning to see the spike we've seen, and I encourage folks to get vaccinated. You can go to the Westchester website at westchestergov.com and click in not only to the dashboard that shows you all the statistics, but also click into the locations where vaccines are available. In our own neck of the woods, a vaccine clinic is available, I think, at least once a week through Northwell Health, which operates both Phelps and Northern Westchester Hospital. They have a vaccine site up at Chappaqua Crossing. So again, you can make an appointment for any of those things and find them through westchestergov.com. I encourage folks to do so. We have coming up on December 1, our annual lighting ceremony. We have a resolution about that tonight, but as soon as darkness hits, that's going on. Paul, you can report more about that, right?
Sure.
Chamber of Commerce and Pace and...
Yes, so we've booked a band for the Chamber of Commerce. We booked a band for the event. They'll be there. So the event's set up for 7 to 8. We're going to be setting up round six. I know a lot of people start coming earlier. We have a band that's, it's a five-piece band of male and female singers, so they'll be doing some holiday music plus some other, I guess, popular hits. And we are also in the process of seeing possibly high school choir members might be able to do a couple songs, too. Pace University, we provide the hot chocolate, as it has been in the past. We're also looking to get some other goodies, like possibly cookies from Sunflower to give out to the kids. The village usually provides something as well. We're looking to give out candy canes and looking to have the event, like we said, from 7 to 8 and inviting anyone that wants to come by. It's the tree lighting, and I believe it's the tradal lighting. So we look forward to seeing everyone. Hopefully, we get some good weather.
Thank you for that. A shout out to Andy Goodman, Greg Nemec, and Kat Nemec. They were the brain children who created the Pleasantville Puzzle Hunt at Thanksgiving time last year. They are back at it again, a labor of love and enthusiasm. So Saturday, November 27, solve puzzles that lead you to clues hidden around the village. A good time will be had by all. For information and updates, you can follow and like P-Ville Hunt on Facebook and Instagram. And so our Parks and Rec Department is assisting with that as well. So thank you, Andy Goodman, Greg Nemec, Kat Nemec. It was a fantastic thing last year, and I have the remotest doubt that it will be a fantastic thing again this year. So P-Ville Hunt on Facebook and Instagram. A whole lot of people had a lot of fun with it last year, and we encourage folks to do it again. I reported the vaccine clinics. We continue to struggle, as all of us do, with the traffic issues associated with this major work on the sawmill. They have switched, as you have now seen, to put the traffic on the new lanes to start the old one. Eric, any report?
The detour has started, and we are, as you mentioned, dealing with the impacts of congestion in our local roadways. We are expecting this to last about another year. We've come to understand that there's some night work that's been going on that's actually in opposition to what the DOT had stated, so we're looking into those completes as well. But we're very much looking forward to this project being over with.
We certainly are. And I know some neighbors of this project have suffered because of noise and night work and all of that, and we followed on with the conversations that they've had with Senator Harkam and Assemblyman Abenanti and the DOT, and are looking for any ways that are reasonable to mitigate the impact of this, recognizing that all of us are in a bit of a bind and will be so for quite a few months to come. So we've also undertaken pretty significant changes at the south end of Memorial Plaza. We've talked about that before. That work is going on now. You want to just quickly update that, Eric?
Sure. Right now, DPW is doing work in the median right now to lay the conduit for the new lights that'll be installed. The new curb and sidewalk has been replaced on the track side, as well as the new crosswalk on the southern end. We have passed a local law in terms of the parking regulations in Memorial Plaza, so we move forward with placing an order for the pace stations. So we're looking to enact, that has to be, that local law has to be sent up to the Secretary of State.
Right.
So it can be filed. So between that and waiting for the pay machines to actually get here, we're probably about two months out from enacting those changes in Memorial Plaza. But there will be public outreach as we move forward with that.
And just to remind folks, we talked about the last time, we're changing the rules.
That's right. So we're moving forward with a hybrid approach to kind of meet our new reality. The plaza has always been restricted to permit holders only from 6:00 AM to 3:00 PM on a daily basis. We are now amending that so that permit parkers, there will be only, permit parking only from 6:00 AM to 10:00 AM, and then open to anyone who's willing to pay a meter from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and that would be Monday through Saturday. Saturday is actually, it would be 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and permit holders would be able to park in a lot with their permits. They would not have to, so it is...
So just to be clear, this isn't a money grab. This is an effort to create some sort of fairness, where we have folks who have paid for permits on the permit side of the lot. And pre-pandemic, those spaces were heavily utilized. Even now, and of course, it remains to be seen what will happen in the coming months, but we have many, many, many empty spaces on the permit side, and are seeking to make those available to transient parkers, but ask them to pay an hourly fee, recognizing the fact that the folks with permits have also paid. So we're trying both to create fairness and also to create a mechanism whereby we can try to fine-tune our rules to maximize the availability of parking to everybody who needs it. Some permit holders were afraid that this would dislocate them. That certainly isn't our intention, nor is it our expectation, and we'll watch it carefully.
That's right. That's right.
Okay. Anybody else have a...
Yeah, I have one thing. So in upcoming session, I think the next one, we'll have Westchester Community College here. They're coming to talk about potentially using part of our American Rescue Plan Act grant to provide scholarships to village residents or to village employers, to upskill unemployed or underemployed people to be able to take jobs that are available in Westchester, specifically in advanced manufacturing, in energy, in healthcare, and in technology. These are typically jobs that pay better than entry-level jobs and the jobs people might have lost in food service or in retail. If you or someone that you know is in the village or works in the village, or is an employer, I should say, in the village, and has lost a job or is looking to hire employees, please let me know. In the interim, it will be helpful if we can interview a few people to make sure that we understand the needs and discuss the process that we're proposing for the village to adopt. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Then the last thing I had on my list was to remind folks, we have a new issue of the Pleasantville Post newsletter. It's online?
Yep. On our website, we have a button there, Pleasantville Post, right up front. There'll be a limited number of physical copies left at Village Hall and the library, but we ask that everybody go to the website. And then an additional reminder as well, by May, winter parking regulations begin December 1st overnight. No parking 1:00 AM to 7:00 AM for longer than half an hour. And again, December 1st through April 1st.
Which rule is required in order to make those roads available when we have a snowstorm? Folks often ask, well, why can't that just be when it snows? And the trouble with that is, A, sometimes it's unpredictable when it snows, and B, if people get in the habit of parking, they don't remember, and then it's quite, quite, quite difficult to plow, especially in community where we're as tight as we are. So, okay. Any other comments from the Board? Comments from the public on any sort? Nicole, why don't you just give, just for the benefit of the regular meeting, give a quick update on the discussion we had earlier with Leo and Clara from Sustainable Westchester?
Thanks. Yeah, so in our work session, we had a presentation by Claire Kokoska from Sustainable Westchester about two exciting initiatives that are going on in the village, Community Solar and Grid Rewards. And one of these programs, Community Solar, is going to be, the village itself is going to enroll in this program, and the other two are, we're going to have a community-wide campaign that's going to be organized by our Climate Smart community. So if you are interested in learning more about these initiatives, I would encourage you to go to PCTV and watch the work session, where you can see Claire's presentation, and keep an eye and an ear out for learning more about these two programs going forward. I also wanted to mention that in Pleasantville Post, which, as we mentioned earlier, if you haven't seen, the latest edition is available on our website, there's a photo of our new electric municipal lawn mower, and that's an indication of the first in a series of steps that our Parks and Rec Department hopes to take to transition away from gas-powered landscaping equipment to electric equipment, which is something that Sustainable Westchester has helped us with as well in a number of ways. One is that they recently hosted a sustainable landscaping event that our superintendent and our head of parks was able to attend as well. And also in making decisions about equipment, they've been instrumental in helping us with that process.
Thank you. Thank you. And Michael, you want to report on, we have a brief work session discussion about some changes in the Old Village, and just so folks who might not have caught that are aware of what we're thinking?
Sure. So I've been talking to residents in the Old Village and business owners in the Old Village about all the success of the businesses and how that's led to increased car traffic and some parking challenges. And long story short, we'll be making a few small changes to the parking and pedestrian safety situation in the Old Village, the most notable of which would be a creation of some short-term parking at the dinner hour for pickup, drop-off, takeout, delivery, curbside, all of that sort of thing. And also increasing the clarity of the signage and directing people to the free public lot who may not know it exists, who are coming in from other towns to enjoy our wonderful restaurants. More to come.
More to come on that. Thank you, Michael. Eric, what's the report from the field, no pun intended, about the new electric mower?
So far, so good. Pleasantly surprised. So, you know, they, kudos to the Parks Department. They are, you know, on the forefront of this movement. And as we mentioned, we quickly were able to construct a charging station at the Parks Garage, acquire one of these, and so far, so good, so.
Well, you mentioned charging stations. That's in the cards in Memorial Plaza as well, right?
That's right. Looking to place EV charging stations in Memorial Plaza. We've been working with Con Ed on their Make Ready program to bring enough electricity to the area to move forward with those stations. So we are waiting for the state to refund their grant program. All indications that they will, hopefully, and we will get, probably get a feel for that come January, March, when the legislative and budget process gets into full swing up in Albany.
Thank you, sir. All right. Any comments from the public on any subject? All right, with that, let's go back to our resolutions. We already did the one, Paul did it, so why don't we start 290, Nicole?
Okay. Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the minutes of the regular meeting held on November 8, 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or corrections of the minutes of November 8? All in favor?
Aye.
David, 291.
Resolved the Board of Trustees hereby approves the following budget amendments for fiscal year ending 2022 as listed below. From the general fund, $334 from highway administration conference and training to garage conference and training. From the general fund, $18,443 from transfer to capital to the capital sidewalk project for fiscal year ending 2022. An increase in revenue expense from the capital fund for $18,443 as an interfund transfer from the general fund to the capital sidewalk project.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved, 292, Michael.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the abstract for payment of claims dated November 22, 2021 for fiscal year 2022, covering check numbers 102035 to 102131. General fund, $1,501,481.49. Special purpose, $797.50. Water fund, $122,601.80. Capital fund, $17,995.69. Refuse fund, $147,135.48, for a total of $1,790,011.96.
Is there a second?
Second.
I hate these when they're seven figures.
Yeah.
Yeah, this one was our annual retirement payment for general employees and police and fire.
I believe this was $629,670 to your retirement, to your retirement fund.
Yeah, I wish. We, if you pay at one time upfront, you do receive a discount, so we're taking advantage of that. So it also is a check run where we're paying our monthly health insurance costs as well.
Yeah, I saw that.
So all according to the budget, we knew it was coming, it's just...
Yeah.
Doesn't feel good when it comes all at once.
That's right. If there's any, if there's any victory here, it did come in under budget, about $30,000, so kudos to Noreen for calling that right.
And to Noreen for many other things as well.
Absolutely.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved, 293, Paul.
Michael's next.
Didn't you do that one, Michael?
I just did one, yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Paul is getting the wordy long ones.
Yeah, seriously.
You gotta give this stuff to the lawyer on the board.
Whereas the Village of Pleasantville and MetroPCS, New York's LLC, MetroPCS, entered a communications site lease agreement dated August 30, 2010. a communications site lease agreement dated August 30, 2010, herein collectively the lease, whereby the village leased MetroPCS certain premises therein described that are a portion of the property located at 345 Castleton Street, Pleasantville, New York, 10570, the property. And whereas the village was presented with an offer from MetroPCS to enter into a First Amendment to Communications Site Lease Agreement, the First Amendment, to modify, to modify the rent and extend the term of the lease for a period of five years, commencing on full execution of the First Amendment and expiring five years thereafter. And whereas, amongst other things, the First Amendment provides MetroPCS the right to extend the term for three additional five-year terms, which shall automatically renew further action unless MetroPCS notifies the village in writing of MetroPCS's intention not to renew the agreement at least 180 days prior to the expiration of the renewal term. And now, therefore, be it hereby resolved that the Village Board determines that the First Amendment to extend the term of the lease will have no significant adverse impacts on the environment, and hereby issues a negative declaration under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, VI New York C.R.R., Part 617, for the lease extension, and it further, therefore, be a result that pursuant to provisions, Sections 1-102 of the New York State Village Law, the Village Board does adopt this resolution agreeing to enter into the First Amendment. Attached, you can find the First Amendment lease agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
So this refers to the cell tower. Eric, you already need to add to it?
Yep, so MetroPCS has a, they lease space through Crown Castle. This is for, space for their generator. We work with a very talented telecommunications attorney who helped, helped us with these negotiations and recommends we move forward.
And as a, as a related but unrelated aside, Eric, Michael, and I had a Zoom call today with the consulting firm that's involved in developing a cellular master plan up county. You want to give a quick update on that discussion? Michael, you're the guy that brought that forward.
Sure, yeah, I was responding, or we were responding to some concerns from village residents about what they perceive as a pretty dramatic decrease in cellular capacity in the area. And so there are communities from northern Westchester, just, just a bit to the north of us, who have banded together to, to engage a consultant called Cityscape on, on this, on this task, to figure out what their gaps in coverage and capacity are, to come up with a, a master plan for those communities that they can present then to cellphone carriers, mobile carriers, in a kind of streamlined way to, to ease the, ease the transition to better coverage and capacity in the future. So we had a nice discussion, a very informative discussion, at least I thought so.
I did too.
With these consultants about what's possible, what's the current status, status quo of the industry and these, these public-private partnerships. And we will continue to, we didn't resolve anything, we were just get kind of fact-finding information session, and we will continue to discuss with the Village Board and with our constituents concerned about this, so please reach out if you're one of those people, and let us know where your dead zones are, what your carrier is, and what you, you know, what you would like done about it.
Okay. So, back to 293. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. 294, Nicole?
Look at the short, sweet ones.
Yes.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby suspends parking meter fees for the time allowed on one, two, and three-hour meters from Friday, November 26, 2021 through Friday, December 24, 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
So just to be clear, what this does is it suspends the fees, it does not suspend the time limits.
That's correct.
So it's, it sort of cuts both ways, which is to say, it helps because it's free, it hurts because, for example, you can't use the Pango app and potentially extend remotely.
That's right.
But it's certainly the view of the, of the Chamber of Commerce, fair to say, Paul, that it's a benefit in sort of trying to create a feeling of welcome to village shoppers, and we're happy to participate.
Yes, thank you again from the Chamber. I know this is a request that we've always made every year, and we appreciate the village for looking out for not just our community, but all our neighboring communities that come and shop here in our great stores and visit our restaurants and all that. Thank you.
Great. All in favor?
Oh, no, I was just gonna say, I predict that people who moved here during the pandemic from New York City will be particularly charmed. I just met a woman who you did an interview with on PCTV, who's a matchmaker, who moved here from New York City recently.
Like, as in Match.com matchmaker?
You've got to watch the special on PCTV.
That's right.
Well, actually, well, get a shout-out right here. Come up, come say hello.
Hi.
Come say hello.
Come on, Joanna, come say hello.
Come on, Joanna, come say hello about, using the show we're talking about.
Prove to them you're a real person, not just a CGI at PCTV.
Mask off, on. Hi, Joanna Van Trees, I have been hosting What's Up Pleasantville for, now we've done three episodes? Four episodes, yay! And we're just trying to tell people of Pleasantville what's going on in the town, and also like highlight businesses and highlight the residents, and that one episode you were just speaking about were, that we have two professional matchmakers that live in Pleasantville. And they actually, most of their clients are-
Sound like a certified program, do you think? Is there?
Oh, yeah, no, 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 they're really, they're, they're the real deal. And it's, it's kind of a fascinating interview. And last week, we interviewed Russell Gurr from, he's the new music director for Orchestra 914. And wow, he was fascinating, so definitely check that out. And then-
An Aussie.
We also interviewed Robert Hughes, our very own building inspector. Stay tuned for that episode, it should be coming out soon. And we'd love to highlight our teams, so hello, that football game, so exciting! But anyway, thanks for the shout-out, and check us out.
Thanks for the spirit you have brought to all of this, Joanna, very much appreciated. Okay, 294, did we vote on 294? We got so sidetracked.
Alyssa, did we get a vote on that one?
I don't think so.
All in favor of 294, holiday season park suspension?
Aye.
Are we authorized to proceed, Alyssa?
You are.
Okay. 295, David.
Consider authorizing the Village Administrator to sign 2021 to 2022 Independent Contract Services Agreement with Student Assistance Services/DFC Pleasantville Strong. The agreement is attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
So we're the fiscal administrator of Pleasantville Strong, and enact these things based on the advice of the Pleasantville Strong Steering Committee?
That's right. And SAS provides guidance and assistance to Pleasantville Strong on grant applications, grant administration, and reporting.
Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved, 296, Michael.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the Village Administrator to sign a month-to-month lease agreement with Pleasantville Community Television Incorporated effective June 1, 2021. Is that date correct?
Yes.
Which basically continues the existing circumstance, right?
That's right, yeah, and aligns with our fiscal year.
Great. Comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved, 297, back to you, Paul. There we go. We kept Leo and Claire here all this time. We do that purposely because everyone else left, and we were fearful that we'd have nobody.
We weren't gonna lock that on you.
All right, I know that, you never have, Leo.
Resolution number 2021 297, consider authorizing agreement with GNS Solar and RM Community Solar LLC for the village to have an opportunity to purchase Community Solar credits, which could be used to offset the village's electricity charges while supporting local renewable energy generation. Whereas, the Village Board of Trustees believes participating as a subscriber in Community Solar provides an opportunity, benefit from financial savings while supporting local renewable energy generation. And whereas, the Village of Pleasantville has the opportunity to enroll in a Community Solar through Sustainable Westchester Community Solar Program. And whereas, the total credit amount that appears on the village's Consolidated Edison of New York Power Authority bill will offset the village's electric charges, and this credit amount will vary each month depending on the output of the solar system, value of the distributed energy resource, credit rate, and the village's individual allocated portion of the Community Solar project. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Village of Trust, the Village Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby authorizes the Village Administrator to execute the attached Community Solar Credit Agreement with GNS Solar and RM Community Solar LLC for the village to purchase Community Solar credits at 10% discount to their value. And be it further resolved that the initial term of the agreement shall be two years, and will commence on the date of the first utility bill displaying credits, and following the initial two-year term, the agreement will be automatically extended to a yearly basis under the same terms unless either party elects to terminate the agreement. Attached to this resolution is the Community Solar Agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Paul, would you read that again, you know, just for clarity?
Sure.
Comments or questions?
I just wanted to say, for those of you who weren't here for the presentation earlier, that this will allow the village to support solar farms located primarily on rooftops in Westchester and the wider community, and it will also-
Not necessarily in Pleasantville.
Not necessarily in Pleasantville, right? And will, at the same time, allow us to save money on our municipal electricity bill. Claire, how much did we estimate roughly?
$10,000, and that could be more if we have a little more capacity.
Okay, so $10,000 savings on, potentially on our electricity bill, and at the same time, supporting solar energy.
And I'm sorry, I should just say that's $10,000 annual.
Annually, correct, yes, that's, thanks for the clarification.
All right, and thank you, as we said earlier in the work session, to Claire and to Leo and to all the folks at Sustainable Westchester, to put this together. The resolution itself makes clear that you need people who know the ropes to help us along, and those are the guys that know the ropes, so.
Absolutely.
Further comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. 298, Nicole?
Another next. Okay, resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the request from the Recreation Department to hold the annual holiday sing-along at 7:00 p.m. on Wednesday, December 1, 2021 at the intersection of Manville Road and Great Oak Lane, and further authorizes the police chief to conduct traffic restrictions in support of the event.
Is there a second?
Second.
As Paul already reported, should be a fun event, sounds like it might even be a little more elaborate than in the past.
Yes, a little better. Every step I'm taking, a little more elaborate. Just pushing it a little more, a good time.
Yeah. Thank you, guys. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. We already did 299 at the outset, which was ratifying the local law to opt out of allowing adult-use retail cannabis and adult-use onsite cannabis consumption establishments. So, David, 296.
300, maybe?
I'm sorry, yes, I grabbed the wrong thing. 300 is exactly right.
Whereas by resolution adopted on March 24, 2004, the resolution, Village of Pleasantville Planning Board granted final subdivision approval to Pleasantville Village Estates Incorporated, the grantor, and whereas pursuant to the resolution, grantor is required to submit an offer of cessation to the Village of Pleasantville for Springfield Court in recordable form satisfactory to the council for the village of all land included in streets, utility, drainage site, and sidewalk easements as shown on the said plat, and not specifically reserved for private use, together with a policy or certificate of a title company qualified to do business, qualified to do, should that be business in New York State?
Yes.
Showing the title to the deed to be recorded in the county clerk's office at the expense of the applicant, and whereas the Village Board is in receipt of the, of an irrevocable offer of dedication from the grantors for Springfield Court, which grant, which grantors propose to dedicate and transfer to the Village of Pleasantville, and whereas pursuant to Village Law 6-610, public hearing was held on November 22, 2021, with respect to the irrevocable offer of dedication, and whereas as set forth in the, in the resolution, a negative declaration was adopted pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECR, with respect to the proposed subdivision approval, which included the offer of cessation of Springfield Court to the Village of Pleasantville, therefore, no further environmental determination is required under SECR with respect to instant action, to the instant action. Whereas pursuant to Village Law 6-610, after accepting the irrevocable offer of dedication, the next step is for the Village Board to schedule a public hearing with respect to the acceptance of a deed in recordable form transferring Springfield Court from grantor to the Village of Pleasantville. Now therefore be resolved that the Village Board hereby accepts the irrevocable offer of dedication of Springfield Court to the Village of Pleasantville by grantor, and now therefore be it further resolved that the Village Board hereby schedules a public hearing with respect to the acceptance of the deed for Springfield Court for December 13, 2021, dedication letter attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
Brief public hearing on this earlier, a storm of words indicating that, as was always planned, that the completion of that subdivision, it would become a public road? Comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved, 301, appropriately.
I've been, I've been waiting for this one.
Right.
Resolved that the Village Board of Trustees authorizes that the Pleasantville Music Festival be held on Saturday, July 9, 2022, at Parkway Field.
Only if you're playing.
May it be so.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
So as you all know, we were COVID canceled this year, but we're back.
Two years, right?
Yeah, right.
Two years.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm mad as well.
302, Paul.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby accepts the retirement of Thomas Tiffany effective December 18, 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
Tom is a very longstanding employee, we will be sorry to see him go, and we will have occasion to wish him well in his retirement. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved, 303, Nicole.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the Village Mayor to sign the agreement with Foodchester Incorporated to operate the Pleasantville Farmers Market for a term of three years from December 1, 2021 through November 30, 2024. The agreement is attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
Eric, anything to report?
So this, this agreement mirrors the former one in many ways. The additions just highlights the fact that it may be a 12, a 12-month outdoor operation. Historically, the winter market moved indoors, but we're unsure of the availability of indoor space moving forward, so it carves out the ability to operate in Memorial Plaza during the winter. Furthermore, it carves out the ability to operate in the north end of the plaza as well as the south end of the plaza if we have to move the market for Manville Road or a future civic space project. And it, it provides that the village will provide two crossing guards or two parking lot attendants who have been supporting the market, and that seems to be now a vital addition to the market operations. So those are the main points, and again, extends for three years.
So those are, just to be clear, those are the only changes, or those are the main changes from, because it was hard for me to discern what was new in this?
Yeah, those are, those are just about the only changes. I mean, there is verbiage there about music licensing, which we have done in the past, but yeah, that's, that's about, that's about it.
Okay.
And I mean, as Eric already indicated, in the past, the market would close the week before Thanksgiving outside and then have an off week, which will be the case next week anyway, and then move indoors to the middle school for the winter. That obviously wasn't a viable option in a COVID world, and so they morphed to an outdoor market in Memorial Plaza, but heavily focused on their online ordering system, which turned out to be a pretty big success, and I think was pretty well received by both the vendors and the customers. So obviously, the COVID issues still prevail, but it is likely that that's the model going forward, so. Comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved, 304. Motion approved, 304. Who's turn was it?
I think it's me. David. Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the Village Administrator to sign a proposal from BDW Roofing Incorporated for work to clear gutters and install pigeon and ice guards.
Is there a second?
What?
Second? Did we get a second?
Was that something that was on the work session that we didn't get to?
It was, but I think if we can have a second, we can. Table may be, but maybe this is the occasion. We missed getting to it in the work session, but here's our moment, Eric.
So when, when the, the village first moved to this building, or when it actually, after that, it redid the gutter system on all sides of the building except the back. So, and, and since then, the gutters have been getting clogged, we've got a pigeon problem back there.
When you say back, you mean the L?
That's right, yes.
You don't mean the wall that's parallel to it, correct?
No, not adjacent, essentially over where our, our new condenser units are.
Right.
We're getting a lot of ice buildup, and without the ice guards, the ice is actually falling, falling down. We also have debris, pigeons that have nested over time, and so we need to clear the gutter and, and put in ice and pigeon guards. And so we've reached out to many contractors, and as you can imagine, it's very hard these days to lock in contractors. I mean, we took this on maybe three or four months ago, or finally to a point where we've, we've collared a contractor who's interested for a good price. There's a memo attached to this from our facilities consultant recommending we move forward with this. Most of the cost of this, or almost half of it, is actually just putting up the scaffolding to get that hot. So this is something we think needs to be done in order to protect our, those compressor units from falling ice, and we're hopeful we can get it done before the first snowfall.
And all in, the job is $21,500.
That's right.
Second.
Aye.
Aye, motion, motion approved. The last one, 305, Michael.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the hiring of James Vetrano as a part-time available school crossing guard, job code 141, at the hourly rate of $20.62, with an effective date of November 20th, 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. That's the end of our regular resolutions. Anybody have any business, further comments, something to say? Any member of the public in that same boat? We're, we're down to slim pickings here, staff and press and, and camera, so. All right. With that reminder again, December 1, our lighting ceremony and holiday sing-along. Thank you, Paul and the Chamber of Commerce. Hope folks will join us for that. We'll be back to you in December. Our regular meetings are, well, are, what am I going to do about the meeting of the 27th? Are we going to go ahead with that as planned?
Yes, we actually have the audit presentation lined up for that day.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, there is a, there is a question in the chat from one of our remaining attendees.
Yes?
Is Pleasantville dating the budget for 2022? Hope since we've missed it two years, they'll have more funding to make it even better.
Mr. Morrissey?
If, if it's the board's wish to move forward with Pleasantville Day, it will be, it will be so.
So, so I, I think at the moment, it feels viable that we can do Pleasantville Day. Ben, I can't guarantee that you get two years' budget for one year, but we'll talk. All right.
I think we should move forward.
I, I do think we should move forward, yes, yes. Okay, thank you for that, Ben, and not only that, but the many other ways in which you bring stuff to our attention, very much appreciated. So as reported Wednesday, December 1 is the lighting ceremony, and then we're back to our regular meeting, the second and fourth Mondays of December, that would be the 13th and the 27th. We have an executive session on matters of real estate. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
It's just a correction, matter of real, real property and personnel.
Real property and personnel.
Um, yeah, some of.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approved, thank you all.